Everybody ready down this end? Okay. Okay. Okay, hello everybody. Can you hear me now in the back? Can you hear back there? Okay. So, I'd like to just welcome everybody to our council meeting tonight and thank you for your interest in our community and what's going on. We appreciate your interest and I would like to then just call the meeting to order. And so the first thing I'll ask the City Clerk Mayor Killian to do our roll call. The record will reflect that all members are present. Thank you. And I'll ask Vicki Raymey to do, she's with the president, she's the President of Brother Benno's Auxiliary and she's going to do our Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation this morning. So if you'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice with them.
If you remain standing, please.
Almighty God, as we gather today to discuss the issues for the good of the City of Vista, give us the guidance to take the necessary steps forward in making Vista a safe and viable place for all the citizens and visitors. As we work together to dwell in the possibilities wholeheartedness, may we gain the support from each other and have a positive passionate for resolution. Help us to open our hearts to those in need locally and nationally, for the people who are suffering from disasters and are coping with the loss of family members, neighbors, homes, businesses, such disasters as in Japan, the people along the Mississippi River, and most recent, the people in the city of Joplin, Missouri. May they receive the strength to rebuild their lives. Let us also keep in our hearts and thoughts this Memorial Day, the members of the Armed Forces who gave up their lives to ensure that our freedom would be there for years to come, and to all the current members of the Armed Forces who are continuing the fight for our freedom. Let's not forget their families as they await for their safe return home. We are to be grateful to be living in Vista, in the state of California, in the United States of America. The opportunities are endless, as well as our hopes and dreams, may they never cease to exist. For our leaders, President Obama, Congress, Senate, state and local leaders, may they continue to strive to make a better world for everyone, filled with peace and love, and may God bless America. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Raymey, for being with us tonight. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is we're going to have the approval of the agenda by our Assistant City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. We didn't have a closed session tonight. Usually in a closed session, we discuss matters of litigation and any other matters allowed under state law, but we didn't have a closed session tonight, so our city attorney won't need to bring us out of that. Correct, Daryl Piper. There's no presentations scheduled. And the next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar, and it's considered actually with one vote, usually for several items, unless there's someone that wants to pull it up, member of the public or a member of the council. So right now I have three things pulled. I have item C5, which is, C5, which is the levy of special tax for community facility districts. C7, which is the California Desert Protection Act. And C9, which is the extension of development timeframe for Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park. And so with that, does anybody on the council want to pull anything else besides those items? If not, then I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
Do I have a second? Frank, or Councilmember Lopez? Thank you. Okay, so please vote. Okay, that motion passes. So the next thing, now we'll go to the items that are removed from the consent calendar for discussion, and the first one would be on the levy of special tax for the Community Facilities District, 2011, 2012. Would you like a report or would you like to hear the speakers? Would you like to hear a report, council? Yes, a report, no report, just the speakers? Okay, we'll hear the speakers first. So the first speaker will be Chuck Rabel.
Ms. Mayor, Council, Chuck Rabel, you know who I am and where I live, so. Question if I can, the, these monies that are levied, in my mind, should go to three things. One is to retire the bonded debt on the infrastructure that was put in place. Number two is the regular maintenance of the streets and whatever other improvements there are. And the third should be, I think, a sinking fund for paying capital items going forward. Is that correct?
Do you want to answer?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the Finance Manager and Treasurer for the City of Vista. To answer Mr. Rabel's question, for these particular CFDs, they were established solely for servicing debt that was originally issued to put capital improvements in place within the Community Facilities Districts.
With that in mind, then, when does the, when do the bonds get retired?
The North County Square CFD, the final bond payment on that one is October 1st, 2021. The Hacienda Drive in Buena Vista Creek, which is basically the CFD that's on the Costco and BMW side of the street over there, that final one is on September 1st, 2020. And the Hacienda Gateway Restructuring, which is the houses that are up on the side of the hill, on the other side of the street on, from Hacienda at Costco there, their final assessment will be on the April 2016 tax bill.
I do appreciate it. It just seems like a lot of money, especially when businesses are hurting so much. The good news, I guess, for Walmart is even though they expanded the store, the basis is still just to pay down the bonds, so that, I assume that hasn't increased. The North Island Federal Credit Union, which is gone, these other, other people that have to pay, just seems, seems like a real steep price, but I guess you don't have a choice if it's all bonded.
Thank you, Mr. Raymey.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. So you're saying, once they're, it's over with, it's over with?
That is correct.
That's it. So, and we have until 16, until they're, most of them are over, or all of them?
North County Square will be done in, in October 1st, 2021. Hacienda on this Costco side will be done in September of 2020. And the 195 houses that are up on the side of the hill opposite of Costco will be done with the April 2016 property tax payment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if there's no more questions, then I would entertain a motion. Okay. Okay, have a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. The next item that was pulled was C7, which is the California Desert Protection Act of 2011. And I have two speakers, Patricia Pagliisi, did I do it right? Okay, so you're first, followed by Chuck Rabel.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, council and everyone. My name is Patricia Pagliisi. Can you hear me?
Talk right into that.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I decided just this morning that I needed to address this, C7, which is the California Desert Protection Act that Dianne Feinstein is promoting, and I see it's recommended that the city send a letter in support of this. And this just goes directly to the heart of my feeling about our country. Our government is, I know it does, and it owns over 30% of the land in the United States is owned by our government, but it's not constitutionally what we were meant to do as a country, is to have our government own so much land, in fact, any. And Theodore Roosevelt, supposedly a Republican 100 years ago, was the first one to grab land from the citizens of the United States, and that was under the auspices of that it was parks, national parks that we were creating. And it sounds wonderful and marvelous, and we should protect things, but it should be the people of the United States who are in charge of such matters, not government. And I have a little, the quickest little story to tell you that brought this to my, to my heart today, because I was speaking to a young man yesterday who told me, because he's a civil engineer in Northern California, and his company just got a $20 million contract in the Middle East, and they were given a contract to do a sewer system for one of the big cities in the Middle East, and I'm not yet naming names because that's not significant, but the, the contract was to design a sewer system, because several people have died with the very tremendous rains that they have there. And so the government said, they got a contract from this firm in California and said, "Design for us a sewage system that, that has a lot of manholes in the design," because if it never gets built, at least there will be a lot of manholes, and it'll look like the government has done something, that the king has done something to make it look like he's trying to help the people. And by the way, they said to the engineers that they gave the contract to, "Don't worry if there are any homes in the way. Just disregard them, because the king owns everything, and we can get rid of those houses, and just do what you need to do." So from Teddy Roosevelt on to Dianne Feinstein, who wants us to now get more land for the federal government, and I don't know if people know it, but 80% or more of Nevada is owned by the government, some of the best land in the United States is owned by the federal government, I just implore you, please do not, do not send a letter, at least not one that represents all of us, from Vista, saying that you support this. It's not American, it's not constitutional. Thank you.
Chuck Rabel?
On page one of the staff report, it talks about how this bill is similar to Congressman Issa's HR 41. HR 41 is talking about 21,000 acres of federal land. This bill talks about 1.6 million acres of federal land. I spent the early 90s up in Inyo County. Inyo County's the size of Maryland. 4% of it's privately held. The rest is the Owens Valley that LA Water and Power owns, or the feds, or the state. And even though we had open range up there, that's a good thing, when I first got up there, Feinstein and Boxer passed SB 1, which put off all kinds of federal lands off limits in perpetuity. Now, my problem is with the next generation. We're, we're not teaching them well enough, for whatever reason, and we're burdening them with more and more taxes, the next couple generations, and now we're going to take yet more potential resources out of production. Okay? There's hard mining up in these areas, there's potential for geothermal, there's all kinds of things that, once you take it off the table, it's gone. And these, these poor next couple generations have to pay for it. I, I would oppose this and ask that you not send such a letter to Congressman Issa. I'd also ask why anybody didn't step forward when he was smeared on supporting and obtaining a grant request for you folks on West Vista Way, the newspaper, about three weeks ago. Never mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel.
Mayor, if I could clarify, the council already supported HR 41 from Congressman Issa and sent a letter in support.
Okay. Do we, do you, would you like a report?
There's a speaker card coming.
Councilmember Coles?
Well, I see a speaker card coming forward.
Oh, is there a card coming for that? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you. I come to speak for the people of the world. I don't come to speak for facial interests. I can no longer afford to keep the Sierra Club membership, but when I hear that such a thing of trying to preserve what is nature is un-American, I have to hurry up and submit a request to speak. I speak in favor of nothing merely but a letter of support. How minimal can we do to protect what's there? It doesn't belong to you and me. It belongs to the world. It belongs to the future generations. If I were to take Interstate 8 towards the Colorado River, I would find many instances of where this vast territory has been kept and every day is abused. I stand for the next generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody like a report from Ms. Zimmerman?
I'm okay.
Would you like to give us a short report?
I would. Thank you, Ally Zimmerman, Assistant to the City Manager. I would just clarify that the 1.6 million acres are already federal lands. This is just improving the protection of those federal lands, so it's not putting any more land out of private development, it's, it's public land already. As the staff report indicates, it's to improve the protection, it's increasing the Mojave Trails National Monument and a number of other monuments and preservation areas in most of San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. Senator Feinstein's office and the sponsor of the bill, the California Wilderness Coalition, are now asking for support from San Diego County local governments, because there is a tiny portion of it that does come into San Diego County. This bill is similar to the House resolution that this council supported, that Congressman Issa put forward for a San Diego federal project. And so under that same auspices, we are recommending that the city council send a letter of support on this bill as well. Even though it's not as much a, a San Diego impact, it is an area that San Diego County residents and Vista residents alike use for recreational purposes. There's no, no, there's no organized opposition to the legislation at this time. The, the bill has been crafted so that each party, the parties, the wilderness parties, and then typically the off-road vehicle parties that are usually in conflict, have worked out a number of provisions, so that both are, are very pleased with the compromise, that off-road recreational areas have been protected, as well as the wilderness areas have been protected.
I would also say that I, I actually met with the representatives from Senator Feinstein's office, and, and actually, I was surprised, because the off-road vehicle people also support this, which is support, you know, usually the environmentalists are, and the off-road people are against each other, but they, they all support this. So that was, I thought, an interesting fact. So we'll start, and I have Councilmember Grankey, followed by Councilmember Coles, followed by Councilmember Lopez.
You know, I'd just like to say that, you know, my, my family and I have, have traveled around quite a bit and have seen the Grand Canyon, have seen Yosemite Valley, Yellowstone National Park, and thank God they were saved, because they're beautiful sights. Certainly something that the whole country should share and enjoy. And as I look over the list of places that are included in this protection act, including Joshua Tree, Death Valley, places that I've seen, Mojave Desert, again, beautiful, pristine country, so I will be supporting this.
Councilmember Coles?
I appreciate that accurate reflection of the actual background behind this, this act and this, our support for it. I grew up in the Mojave Desert, and I, I know of its beauty and its pristine wilderness and some of the beautiful sights out there. I also know that the, the federal government has worked well with private enterprise to explore and, and get valuable items for, for our use out of those responsibly. And I, I really think it's important that we have some federal oversight in these wilderness areas, so that there is responsible exploration, or mining, or other usage of, of those parks. Even the off-road folks have learned how to work hand in hand with, with the federal government, so that they don't ruin those wilderness areas, because that was what was happening. And now they have come together with the goal of keeping these wilderness areas, you know, vital for the future of our children and our nation. So I support this, and I will be making a motion to approve it.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. If we hadn't reserved the Grand Canyon years ago, would we have the Grand Canyon today? Decisions back then were made to save a lot of the parks, and I think they were wise, wise to do that. You can go anywhere in the United States and you can find parks. In Temecula, there's a, a couple hundred acres that was named after Ronald Reagan. If they hadn't done that, those kids would not have a park in an area so nice out there because there was thinking behind it. So I will second this motion. I understand where the folks that are, spoke tonight, where they're coming from and what, what they're saying, but I will second the motion tonight. Thank you.
Okay, then, I have a motion and a second, if there's anyone else that...
Do I have just one chance to say one thing? Am I allowed?
Yeah.
Say it just really quick.
No. Do you want to hear it, and others? They said, they, no, they say no. Okay, so then, please vote. Okay, motion passes unanimously. The next item is item C9, and that is an extension of the, the development timeframe for Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park, so...
Mayor, would you like a presentation by staff first?
Yes, I'd like to have a staff report first, and then we'll take our speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter and members of the city council. My name is John Meyer. I'm the interim redevelopment and housing director. This evening, Kim Cruz, our Associate Redevelopment Project Manager, will be providing you a brief report.
Good evening, Mayor and chairperson, council and commission members. For your consideration this evening, staff presents a resolution that would extend the development timeframe for the site formerly known as the Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park, to further the commission's compliance with California redevelopment law. Because the property was purchased using affordable housing funds, the commission must initiate affordable housing activities within five years, or approve a five-year extension. The commission did, within the initial five-year period, enter into two agreements with potential development partners to build residential projects on the site. However, neither project proceeded, because the developers determined that they, that they were no longer economically viable. Currently, staff is exploring options and developing a new conceptual plan for the site. This plan proposes a mix of uses, including retail, commercial, office, park space, and residential, which would include affordable housing. Including more uses shall increase the site's economic development potential, which will help attract developers and make future development more financially feasible. Allowing additional time will enable the commission and staff to proceed in developing an optimal plan for the site, to maximize the benefits to the City of Vista and redevelopment project. This concludes the staff presentation. Mr. Meyer and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, hold on just a second. I'm, I'm just asking them if I have a conflict of interest on this. Do I have a conflict of interest on this?
Mayor, I don't believe that you do, but out of abundance of caution, as always, I would suggest that you recuse yourself, since you own property adjacent to this particular piece of property.
Okay, so I'll recuse myself and let Mayor Protem Aguilera take over.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, you have questions of staff right now? No, okay, let me go ahead and pull some speakers up. Mr. Rabel?
It's an interesting piece of property. In, in my mind, it's a, it's a monument to bad management and malfeasance. The city started in 1998, and now we're going to get another five-year extension. We were talking about senior housing. For a long time there, never happened. In fact, senior housing, affordable housing in Vista is abysmal. On the 13th of March of this year, North County Times put out a chart, I'll, I'll give you copies, probably not enough. Addressing low-income housing in our greater neighborhood. It says Vista has developed 219 units, as opposed to San Marcos with over 2,000, Carlsbad with over 1,600, Oceanside with over 1,300. The only housing that has been done has been outside the redevelopment area, Cedar Road, Cedar Road in Edelton, and Vista Hidden Valley. You have to subtract out the, whatever the number was at Sycamore Creek, and you come up with their number. It's a good number. It's a bad record, but it's a good number. You, you used the housing fund to clear title for a developer, okay, and then we manipulated things and took it back. The city owns it now. This is one of the 50 properties plus that the redevelopment used to pay landscape and lighting fees on, and now that the city owns them again, the fees are gone. With that said, yes, I'm not happy, but I'm the only one. It comes to housing, it seems like I'm the only one. It comes to housing, it seems like I'm the only one that steps up and talks about it. And I do so because we lost good people at DDH that went to work for the landlord, because the rents were high and they got free rent. The promise, one of the promises of redevelopment is workforce and senior housing. Sometime in my lifetime, maybe Vista will step forward and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the only speaker? Okay, that was the only speaker we had. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Aguilera. You're right in many ways there, Mr. Rabel. It's been a, you know, piece of property that has cost the city some money, and, but financially, when you get, and I believe that you're right, housing should be put on that property, because it sits back, and, but it's just not feasible right now. If we had developers who would come forward, we would jump on the bandwagon immediately, but we just don't have it right now. This will help us extending this for another five years, so that we will not run into problems with it. So this is just to extend it, but I do say that the city needs to do something with that property, because it's just sitting bare there, and it's not bringing any revenue to our, or taxes to our city. Thank you.
Mr. Gronky?
I have several questions from staff about this issue.
First of all, when we purchased this property back in 98, how many low-income units were This is a trailer park, there's a lot of seniors and elderly living there at the time, if I recall.
I believe there was 158 on site.
158, okay. And so then, we shut that down simply because the maintenance problem was too great, the upkeep of it.
That's correct.
Okay. So if, my understanding is that we've had a number of developers come before us and propose projects for that site, but because the economy didn't work out. How many developers have we had?
We've entered into ENAs with two different developers.
And in both cases, it didn't work out simply because the costs were too high?
Correct.
If I had to understand, there's like a million-dollar bridge that has to be built to replace the present bridge that's there? That's just one of the many costs that are involved?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. So there will come a day when the economy will turn around, and things will get better, and we'll be able to develop that parcel. And there is no reason that we can't put senior housing on that parcel, the way we presently have it figured out?
That is correct.
I just want to take exception with Mr. Rabel, and usually I agree with you, Mr. Rabel, but when I look at some of the cities on this, such as San Marcos, which is really an entire redevelopment area, and has been built out over the last 10 to 20 years, unlike Vista, which has really been landlocked for the last 10 or 20 years, there's really an argument to say that, I understand how they can develop 2,000 homes, and we can't redevelop that many. Same thing with Carlsbad, which has huge development going on over the last 10 or 20 years, too. So I have to take an exception with your argument there. But we are working towards developing low-income housing, as much as we can in our city. So I will go along with this, in fact, I'll make a motion for this item.
Okay, you got a motion?
I'll second. Do you want to speak, though? No, I didn't want to speak. I'll just want...
All right, Mr. Lopez, a second. Please vote. Oh. Do I need to move, or to vote? Yeah.
Do we have a revote?
Okay. Okay, passes unanimously with Mayor Ritter recusing herself.
So the next thing, we will go to our discussion items, because we're through the consent calendar. And the first discussion item will be our appointments to various commissions, boards, and committees. So, I don't know if anybody has, Councilmember Lopez, do you have?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Ritter. I forgot that I needed to recuse myself from number one. I went ahead and I voted on it, and I should have, no one, no one's seen that. Was it, it's number one? No, excuse me.
Number three.
Number three.
That I'm not voting on that, correct?
Yes, it was on the consent calendar, so you did not need to leave the dais, but we do need to record the fact you recused yourself on that vote.
Yes, I forgot to. Thank you.
Okay, so then I will, do you have anything to say about the current item, D1? Did you want to speak on that, or no? Okay. Then Councilmember Gronky?
Well, I just want to thank Mayor Ritter for going through the process and interviewing these individuals, and coming up with the recommendations, so the numbers, the names that I see there are pretty, you know, pretty much the same.
I had help from, I had help from Mayor Protem Aguilera.
And thank you, Mr. Aguilera. It is a long process, and I know there's some really good candidates out there, so it was hard to make that selection. Yes.
We interviewed something like 20, 25, or a few more candidates.
Yeah.
So then, did I, did you make a motion, Councilmember Gronky?
I will be glad to make a motion on this item.
I think, do we need to do items one through four, those first, and then do item five separately? Okay. So are you, did you want to do one through four?
So my motion will be such that we are voting on numbers one through, one through four.
Okay. And I have a second on that?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Lopez. Okay, everyone, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. And then the next item is, those four were appointments to various commissions, and the last one is the two members to the planning commission. And we actually had our incumbents actually reapplied to the planning commission. So I would entertain a motion, or, Mayor Protem Aguilera?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the two applicants that reapplied, that are already existing on our planning commission.
Okay, I have a second from Councilmember Coles. So everyone vote, please. Mr. Gronky and Mr. Lopez, you have to vote again. It didn't go through. Try it again. There we go. Okay. Councilmember Lopez, did you abstain?
Yes.
Okay. There's four to one abstention. Four approved, one abstention. Okay. With that, we'll move on to our discussion item number two, which is our capital improvement program budget for the fiscal year 2011, 2012 through the fiscal year 2015, 2016.
And Mayor, we'll start with Mr. John Conley and Ms. Sudhi Shojja introducing the CIP budget, and then turn it over to Ms. Putnam, who will detail the wastewater section of the CIP.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I am Sudhi Shojja, Assistant Director of Engineering, and will be presenting this item to you. We are presenting the 2011-12 Capital Improvement Program with over $15 million of appropriations for your consideration. As part of this program, nine new projects are proposed, and 29 projects have funding provisions. Also, staff has completed design or construction of 31 projects. This results in over $15 million in new appropriations, and about $86 million in deappropriations. Most of the deappropriations are for sewer projects. In the previous capital improvement program, the proposed sewer bonds were listed for every project. At this point, other funding options are being explored, and as a result, the unfunded balance on every project is being listed as such. Also, the reassurance of redevelopment bonds for the Paseo Santa Fe project was not processed in 2010, and therefore, it is deappropriated in this CIP. In the current CIP cycle, staff has been able to complete design or construction of several projects, such as foothill reconstruction and improvements, and overlay of major arterials such as Melrose and North Santa Fe Avenue, from Osborne Street to Bobier Drive. The overall cost of construction for completed projects were over $8.6 million. This list is continued by completion of two public facility projects in the amount of $18.5 million, and the sewer projects in the amount of $535,000. In addition, the listed projects with about $3.4 million worth of construction are currently underway, and will be completed in the next few months. The La Mirada and Poinsettia Avenue project consists of a street widening, storm drain, and traffic signal and pavement rehabilitation. City of San Marcos is the lead agency on this project. There are a total of 51 projects in this year's CIP program, with majority of them being for a street and sewer improvements. Five new street projects have been added to the CIP program, and I will cover each one of them in more detail. The South Melrose Drive and Shadow Ridge Drive, this will modify the signal, striping, and the road width to provide the exclusive right-turn lane for eastbound traffic at the intersection of South Melrose Drive and Shadow Ridge Drive. The Eucalyptus Avenue project will provide for design and construction of curb, gutter, sidewalk, and associated roadway improvements on north side of Eucalyptus Avenue between Civic Center Drive and Indiana Avenue. This project will also provide for design and right-of-way acquisitions for curb, gutter, sidewalk, and associated street improvements on east side of Maryland Drive between Highland Drive and North Avenue. Staff will be applying for grants to fund the construction cost when the design work This is another design and right-of-way project to provide curb, gutter, sidewalk, and associated road improvements on the south side of Melrose Way, between Melrose Drive and Centennial Annual street rehabilitation and maintenance project for this cycle includes collector streets such as Alta Vista Drive from Veater's to Heather, Longhorn Drive from Shadow Ridge to Melrose, and Live Oak from Lupine Hills to Melrose, and several other streets. It also includes cap seal and slurry seal application on neighborhood streets north of Olive Avenue and south of East Vista Way. Townsite Storm Drain Replacement Project is the only new project for redevelopment, and it includes a preliminary engineering for replacing and upsizing the existing corrugated metal pipe storm drain along townsite from Indian Rock to North Santa Fe Avenue. This concludes my presentation, and we are available for any question you may have.
Mayor Protem Aguilera, did you have a question?
I do. I had a question about Melrose Way. Is that, what, in our general plan, what is that designated, that area?
That area is low-density residential, it's half-acre minimum lot size.
Okay, so not rural?
It's not rural residential. Low-density allows for two units per acre, rural residential is one unit per acre.
Okay. Yeah, my question is just to figure out what type of sidewalk? Is it just either normal square sidewalk?
At this point, that's the preliminary idea. We will determine what the final design is, as part of the engineering design.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Gronky?
First of all, I just want to compliment the city on some of the improvements that have been made around the city, including the foothill area, you know, with the new sewer and gutter, and, not sewer, but gutter and walking pass there. I think it's really beneficial to the kids going to school, and it cleans up an unsightly, sawtooth, I guess is the answer to that one. And especially want to thank the city for the improvements made to Vista Way. It's just beautiful now, considering it's been disrepaired for such a long time, and including the undergrounding of utilities, too. You know, people walk, drive through there, and then they say, boy, it's really beautiful, it's really changed, why is it so different? And they don't realize that those poles came down, and really improved that whole drive. I just want to make sure we're clear on the concept, and you know, sometimes when we have, you know, these buckets of money, or pools of money around, that people understand how we can make these improvements. You know, when we're saying as a city that we're in our economic straits, and yet we can put tens of millions of dollars underground, how can that be accomplished?
There are several funding sources that we are using for this CIP. Over $1.5 million of what we are using for our street projects are from grants. We have been very successful in receiving three grants this year, and we have applied for more. Also, as part of the CIP, we are using almost $1.9 million as our Sandag Transnet half percent sales tax share that we receive for the City of Vista. We have finished several projects, and therefore, the carryover from those projects have been applied towards new projects. We have also been taking advantage of the lower cost of construction in the past few years, and as you've seen, we have finished quite a bit of construction projects, and they came in lower than engineers estimate, and usually, what they usually cost us, and therefore, we were able to apply those savings to new projects. Other sources of funding for the new projects that I explained to you are from Redevelopment School Safety Fund. And that is part of the redevelopment funds that goes towards the school program, and the projects that we presented to you are supported by the Vista Unified School District. And we have about $500,000 from gas tax.
Okay. Let's talk about sewer fees. You know, sewer fees have gone up, you know, we agreed to improve that, our sewer system. So that money goes back into sewers. What else can it go into? If someone pays a sewer fee, can that go into police and fire?
No. Councilmember Gronky, the sewer fees stay within the sewer, the wastewater fund, so it's spent on only sewer components, and Ms. Putnam will be detailing the sewer fees and capital projects in a bit.
So the increases we see in the sewer fees account for some of the improvements that people will see? And they probably won't see them, but they'll be underground, obviously.
Well, for making improvements to the sewer system, we could improve the roadway as well, when we're out digging up the streets.
Okay, fantastic. Oh, I guess that is a good question, too. Planning is in such a way that you always make sure your improvements occur simultaneously, so you're not doing the work twice.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Cutting staff is something that I really don't like, people losing their jobs, but I'd like to say that this, the city has cut staff. We've had staff to design and look at all these sidewalks and all that we've done, and they've done a good job. They've been able to go in the community, find the areas that are tuck, that need sidewalks to protect our citizens of our community, and it's important. I would love to have another $10 million put out there in the streets, but I just don't have it. We don't have it. I think once the economy, I think when I first came on board, I think we had $9 million slated for our roads in our community. And everywhere I go in this community, all I ever hear is, when are you going to fix the potholes in the city? You know? Well, we had plans when I first came on board, but it, but when the state takes that money, you know, you just, you have to do what you have to do, just prolong it a little longer, but that's on all the council's mind, is our roads here in our community. But our staff has done tremendous with the resources that we have been able to collect... But our staff has done tremendous with the resources that we have been able to collect. When you get grant money, you don't pay for that. It's free, so that's a good job. Thank you, staff, for all that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, that's all of our speakers, so I would...
Do we have two other?
No, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, would you like Ms. Putnam to go ahead? She's got a very detailed overview she'd like to do of the sewer program for you.
We would like to hear about the sewer program. Sorry, Robin. Definitely. Thanks. Thank you, the magic wand. Mayor Ritter and members of the council, I'm glad Councilman Gronky asked the question that he asked, because tonight, we're going to kind of walk through the sewer program. We're going to talk a little bit about what all the sewer funds go to pay for, why we had a fee increase, what we're doing with that money, and the whole big picture. So to start, I think most of you are familiar with sort of the city's sewer functions. We have sewer administration out of the Finance Department. That's where the sewer bills come from. That's where part of the CIP is developed. They work with us in engineering to develop all of the numbers and really to present the fine work product. It's the capital improvement program budget that you have before you. And then sewer engineering, I'll talk a lot more about what the functions of sewer engineering are. And then public works, those are the sewer guys that you see out in the street doing the physical work. But the things that I think are a little bit hidden are the fact that our sewer lines go through the city of Vista into the city of Carlsbad and then to Encina. So we also have capital projects and operations, sewer operations and maintenance in the city of Carlsbad that we fund. We have pump station operation and maintenance that we pay Encina to provide for us, and then we also have wastewater treatment at Encina. So to go a little bit more in-depth into what sewer engineering does, is it's really the management of the system, which includes coordination with operations and administration, working with Encina, and then development of management and the management of the long-range plans and the capital program for new sewer projects. Sewer public works, you've seen them, and I know maybe you've been to the Public Works Day where they show you their equipment and all that, that they do routine cleaning of the lines, they do the closed-circuit televising of the lines to try to detect problems that might be occurring with the lines, and then they repair the collection system. But another really important thing they do is provide manpower and equipment when spills occur throughout the system. So if a sewer spill happens, be it in Vista, Carlsbad, or at Encina, you know, Vista forces are, I'll say it, they're the best, they're highly respected, and they're the guys that go out and provide the bulk of the manpower. The other agencies don't really have a lot of manpower to do this kind of thing, so our guys are really heavily relied upon to do that work. City of Carlsbad has some big capital projects that we're going to be embarking on with them because we're a joint owner in all of these lines that travel from Vista to Carlsbad to the sewage treatment plant, and they also, we pay them to do routine cleaning and repair of the collection system as it passes through their city. Encina, under contract to us and Carlsbad, does operation and maintenance of the sewer pump stations. The sewage treatment is done by Encina Wastewater Authority, and that includes the capital needs at the sewage treatment plant. And several of you sit on the Board of Encina, and you're very familiar with this, but for everybody's information, Vista, you know, and Buena constitute 40% of the governing body of Encina, so we're a really important partner in this whole wastewater treatment business. A couple other things that sewer funds pay for are the city's stormwater program, and I know over the years, especially people who've been on the council for a long time, have seen the stormwater program costs creep up because the regulatory requirements keep getting loaded on by the state with no funding behind it. So we're required to put these programs into place and to pay for them, and they're paid for from the sewer program. And then whenever there's a sewer spill or emergency repair or regulatory fine, that's also paid for by the ratepayers. A few statistics about our sewer system. If you take a look at Vista, Vista is in the pink, not the crosshatch pink, but the solid pink. So we have, even though we sort of act as one and we think of it as one, we have two separate funding sources, and in our minds, we keep them very separate, but Vista is the largest, constituting 215 miles of collection system piping. But 40% of our pipes are over 40 years old, and most of them are relatively small diameter, and we have some pipes that are somewhat problematic, like 63% of our pipes are vitrified clay pipe, and in a minute, I'll show you a picture of root intrusion into vitrified clay pipe, but over the years, we have maintenance problems that we need to deal with. And then I know many of you have heard about spills that have occurred because of ductile iron pipe. So this 4% of the pipes being ductile iron pipe are 4% of the pipes that our capital program is going to have plans to replace in the next couple of years. Buena is smaller, and it's the pink crosshatched area on the map, and basically has 101 miles of collection system piping. 32% of the pipes are over 40 years old, and they, too, have some of the problematic types of pipe that we'll talk about more further in my presentation. In terms of how this capital program developed several years ago, and I would say 2005, 2006, a master plan started to be developed, and the purpose of the master plan is to figure out what kind of capacity you need in your sewer lines and what kind of capacity you need treatment for. And then you need to conduct a condition assessment to figure out what kind of shape your pipes are in and what kind of repairs you need to undertake, and then all the records are compiled into this computer-based system so that you know what the age and materials of your pipes are also. And the whole purpose of this is so that we can prioritize our capital projects so that we can reduce the risk of spills and regulatory fines. So instead of spending our money on things like that, we're spending our money improving our system. The capacity evaluation that was done as part of the master plan process entailed taking land use data, and you all know John's been working really hard on updating the city's general plan, and we're figuring out what we're going to do in the future, areas that might have more dense development. So it's really important, as you do the sewer master plan, to plan your sewer system to be able to handle additional growth in areas where you think you're going to experience growth. But another really important thing you have to do is, there are these theoretical models, and I know the council has heard a lot about traffic models, where sewer models are the same way. You think you have so much flow, but you really have to go out and measure it to see what, you have 10 residential units, you go out and measure the flow just to figure out, is that, are they really generating the flow you would expect, so that you can make sure your modeling is giving you good numbers? And then you make assumptions about INI, which is inflow and infiltration. That's like when it rains and you get wet weather flows, our bad pipes pull in all sorts of water from different sources, and we can assume how much that is, but we really need to do measurements to verify what those rates are. And one of the good things about the program we're undertaking now is, with all the work we're doing to rehabilitate our lines, we hope to really lower the INI rate. Then you have to figure out when, what is the criteria? If the pipe is 80% full, is that when you replace it? Or do you let it go to 85% full, even though the industry standard says 80%, because you're never going to experience more growth? So it's going to work for you now and into the future? And there's all sorts of looking at the fact that while a plan may tell you you need to build a new sewer, you may be able to put in a small connector line and save a bunch of money and connect to another sewer line that's not at capacity. So our sewer staff, and I didn't get a chance to introduce Mr. Jepson, he's sitting on the far right there, and when you ask a technical question, he's going to be the one to answer it, but basically, they're the wizards that say, "Do we really need to build this project? This is a big project." You know, we'll have something come up that the master plan tells us is a necessity, and we'll say, "Hmm, there's a lot of alternatives. We need to look at it and make sure we're not going out and building expensive new infrastructure when there's a clever fix that is cost-effective." So basically, by doing this whole evaluation, the costs were reduced from the original estimates that were used to develop what the fees are, the fees were in the Red Oak study, which I'm going to talk to you a little bit later in more detail about. So now I'm on to the condition assessment, and I wanted to show you the picture of this pipe that's been infiltrated by roots, because it gives you an idea of what happens to the capacity in our sewer system when it gets broken down and deteriorated. So this assessment involved CCTV-ing all the pipes, coming up with a consistent defect rating, developing this searchable electronic database that includes written comments, and basically, prior to doing this assessment, which was a three-year process, they thought there were going to be $47 million in condition work, and they narrowed it down to $17 million. So while it costs several million dollars to do this work, it paid off because we really were able to target the lines that were in bad condition and that need to be repaired. And since the council was really involved not very long ago in approving some emergency spending for us, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about this new technology that we're using that's called cured-in-place pipe. We did this at the Encina project. We were concerned because there was some deterioration of a concrete pipe that's called the Buena Outfall, and we came to you, we had a contractor we were going to hire to do some other CIPP work, and we said we'd like to hire them to do this work before we have any problems with the line at Encina because it's such a critical line. And so I brought you some pictures, because basically what happens is this resin material is pulled out of a truck in sheets, as you see on the pictures, put down the manhole or another entrance into the sewer line that's developed as part of the project, and then heat, whether it's steam or water, is applied, and you have a whole liner, a whole new liner to the pipe that is, you know, it doesn't disturb the surface of the ground, so you save money not disturbing the street, you don't disturb the public as much, and it's widely accepted as a 50-year repair of the pipe. So it's a really good, cost-effective measure. Go right ahead.
I have a question. How is that different than the ones we're having problems with, the ductile iron pipe?
It's...
Isn't that lined also?
It can be lined. So some of the ductile iron pipe projects, is that correct? That will be lined.
So we'll be repairing those with this, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so the ductile iron piping is not similar to this at all, then?
No, the ductile iron pipe is, was a metal pipe that was put in, it wasn't used until 30 years ago. And they started using it because they thought it was perhaps a superior material for sewers, and so they put it in some really hard-to-get-to places, like under freeways and things like that, and then all of a sudden, they realized, wow, this is experiencing really advanced corrosion for cer, in certain circumstances, whether it be from the outs, the soil on the outside, or from materials with certain types of pH from the inside. So once we realized there were lots of hazards associated with it, and we've had, there's the spill at Buena Vista Creek that was associated with it, and then the problem we had at Encina recently, that actually was a concrete pipe.
Okay. Yeah, I must have misunderstood. My understanding with the ductile iron pipe was that it was also lined initially, and that's what made it special, but apparently I just had misinformation?
I'm going to let Mr. Jepson answer what, if ductile iron pipe has a lining inside of it.
Is this on? Yeah. Ductile iron pipe is lined with a cement mortar liner, and that cement mortar liner is adversely affected by the pH environment in sewers. So it was very common in the late '60s, '70s, and early '80s to use ductile iron pipe, and now many agencies are experiencing these problems. So throughout the industry, ductile iron pipe is being lined or replaced to avoid catastrophic failure.
Okay, so it did have a lining, it was just an inferior product or lining product?
Right.
This concrete, is that what you said? Okay, thank you.
And this is a resin. I didn't say that.
Yeah, okay, so I just want to make sure it was different. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So one of the things that Sudi talked about a little bit was the fact that there were a couple initial sewer program projects that were completed in 2011. There were some projects on Cannonair and Calera, Vale Terrace and East Vista Way, less than half a million dollars. Then we did the emergency work at Encina, which is completed, and right now, we're finishing this Buena Project 8174, which is this 2,500 feet of ductile iron pipe rehabilitation, and we're lining a whole bunch of different segments in different locations, and I was hoping by the time we got to you, we'd be able to say it was done. But the contractor, it's kind of a small project for them, so they've kind of been dragging their feet a little bit, but they're doing a great job when they do the work, so that one will be done this fiscal year still. There are some really major projects that are contemplated for 2012, and one of them is a force main. It's a ductile iron pipe that goes from the Buena Creek Pump Station to South Melrose Drive. It's about 2,700 linear feet of pressure pipe. This is a kind of a high-risk project for us. It's one we want to get done right away because we wouldn't want to have a spill on this line. There's also this Watson Way sewer replacement. It's a $3.8 million project. It involves some upsizing of a sewer line. It's 3,300 linear feet, and it's kind of a tricky project because it goes between some residential developments, so we're going to be using some micro-tunneling technology for a portion of this project. So it's going to be a bit of a new venture for Vista to embark on, and we think we have some very good plans and specs. We've hired some experts in the field to give us the best possible information on how to do it well. And then a project that you're very familiar with, either hearing about the spill that happened at Buena Vista Lagoon. Finally, we're in a position where we're doing this joint project with Carlsbad. It's about a $4 million project, and we're going to rehabilitate the line all the way from the pump station there at 78 and Jefferson to the 5 freeway. We're going to go all the way along the street at Jefferson, so it's going to be a low-impact from an environmental standpoint project because it's in the road, even though you're sort of weaving in and out of this critical habitat area. We're in a safe spot for our construction. There's going to be also designing and construction of additional pipeline repair and replacement projects in 2012. And just to get an idea of this rehabilitation work, there's a couple CIPs, one in Vista, one in Buena, in this upcoming fiscal year, that'll each rehabilitate over 250 different segments of pipe. So it's not going to be like we're working in one neighborhood all throughout Buena. You know, the whole area we define as the district, we're going to be lining more than 250 pieces of pipe. And these ongoing capital projects are going to be implementing all the things we found in our CCTV review, the, and that the master plan has identified. One of the things that we're very proud of is, the master plan included a program, EIR. During the engineering of all these projects, environmental considerations are thought of upfront so that mitigation measures can be minimized, and the reason why that's important is mitigation measures mean money. And if we don't avoid impacts, it can be very expensive, and obtaining permits can be very time-consuming, so we're engaging in this process where we obtain one permit from the resource agencies for all of our sewer projects, and then we minimize the acreage that we impact, and then the cost of mitigation is minimized, and we have one mitigation site that we construct all at one time in advance of our impacts so that we can have the least area that we have to mitigate. So now on to the real question at hand, which was the fees. In 2007, and I know many of you were on the council then, a company called Red Oak conducted the sewer rate study, and I watched them... have to mitigate. So now, on to the real question at hand, which was the fees. In 2007, and I know many of you were on the council then, a company called Red Oak conducted the sewer rate study, and I watched them talk to the council, and I read the reports, and, you know, they went through everything, the funding sources, the operation and maintenance costs, cash flows for capital projects, reserve requirements, and the debt financing. And, basically, what Red Oak, what the Red Oak fee study said was that, for the next ten years, that in Vista, the area that's defined as Vista, the fees should be raised nine percent a year, and then in the area that's defined as Buena, the fees should be raised three-and-a-half percent a year. So what was adopted was, for five years, a six percent increase for Vista, and a three-and-a-half percent increase for Buena. So, to summarize, all of these cost savings I've been talking about are really great, because we're going to reduce project financing costs by getting state loans at a low-interest rate, instead of doing public financing. We're reducing the project's scope by reevaluating recommendations in the master plan, and carefully reviewing all this closed-circuit TV work. We're getting less-expensive methods, like the cured-in-place pipe, and our environmental mitigation costs are down, but we didn't, we didn't adopt those high-fee increases that were originally recommended anyway, for the whole timeframe they were recommended. So, had we had all the costs we had anticipated, we would have had a shortfall, significant shortfall. So, this is where we are now. We're working with a financial advisor to take all our new information, because our CIP this year is brand-new. We've given it a lot of thought, a lot of this new information is available on projects that can be, I'll just say, downsized, or minimized, or reduced in cost. And we're going to take that into consideration in our financial planning process, and we're going to work, we're going to balance the revenues with the expenditures, and then the debt service payments that are related to financing the projects. And, this planning process is really going to help us determine what money we have available, and how hard we have to work to prioritize these capital projects, to make sure that we're doing what's necessary to be cognizant of spill prevention, and fines, and all of that, but we're not doing things that are over and above what we really need to do, because the costs go up, and then we end up needing to raise rates. So the final thing is, as we work through this financial planning process, the, kind of the end product will be a review of sewer service charges and a capacity fee study that are going to need to be conducted. And, that's all that I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you.
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. The money that we have for five years collected from the folks of our community, that ends when?
It started in 2008. So, five, for five years, the Vista rate payers get a six percent a year increase, the Buena rate payers get a three-and-a-half percent a year increase, and what that goes to pay for, if Ms. Killian will help me and take me right back to the beginning of the presentation with that chart, we can look at it, but it pays for everything. And the sewer program includes all of these things. It includes the capital project, it includes sewage treatment at Encina, it includes all of those things. And what I can tell you is, the things that are within Vista's control, like our operating budget, our, our, you know, between engineering and sewer administration, sewer operations, we're being as careful as we can to be very penny-wise, because we don't want to raise rates. We do need to undertake capital projects that are necessary to have a good operating system. So, we are building up some money, but I can assure you that the money is not going to sit there and not be spent. It's all planned to be spent, and not frivolously, but on projects prioritized based on need.
The money...
I was just going to clarify your question, Councilman Lopez, and we're in the five-year sewer fee increase, and we're just completing year three. So we're starting year four, July first.
So, two more years of collecting, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, when you're, when you're doing this sleeve that we're doing, are you doing those just on the city's main, main lines, or where are you doing that?
All, all over the place.
All over, all over the place.
There's some, there's this thirty-six-inch main that will have cured-in-place pipe. We did the Buena Outfall with cured-in-place pipe.
Yeah. Now, the plastic, when you put that through, if you have roots and all that, and you put it through, you're still going to have a collapsing pipe, aren't you? Because the roots will still continue to...
We're going to, we're going to let Mr. Jepson talk about that, but you clean the pipe before you put the liner in. And he'll describe the process.
I wonder if, are we, we know that need to be replaced. Are we spending money foolishly, just doing some of those, instead, go ahead and repair the pipes, so that we don't, because the money that you're spending on all that could be put towards completing that, that project, or doing that pipe?
Right, that's a two-part question, I believe. So, the first part is, to simplify the types of projects we're undertaking, there are capacity projects where the pipe is too small, it must be replaced with a larger pipe, and there are condition-related projects, such as the root intrusion on the photo. When we're doing a condition-related project, we strive for the cured-in-place trenchless It's less invasive and less expensive than a conventional dig-and-replace. The cured-in-place liner, after it's cured, is fully structural. It does not rely on any strength or presence of the host pipe. The host pipe can be completely deteriorated or damaged. The liner installed is fully structural for the soil loading on top of it. Prior to lining, roots are removed. If there are large voids, they can be repaired by an independent sleeve that's pulled into the pipe prior to lining, or an actual spot repair where it's excavated and replaced just in that localized area prior to lining the whole pipe.
Now, the money that we receive in the five years, will that be enough to take care of the sixty percent of pipe that you say needs to be replaced?
We didn't say sixty percent of the pipe needed to be replaced. We were just giving you numbers about age, but we didn't say sixty percent of it needed to be lined or replaced. We didn't throw out a figure like that, and what, that's why we're doing the financial planning. We do not have the answer to your question.
So, on the last sentence there, you're doing, you want to do a study, is that for after five years, if it says you need more money, then you're going to ask the people for more money?
What we're going to do is do, now that we have a capital, a defined capital program that tells us what we need to do to rehabilitate the system, and a cost associated with it, we're going to look at the costs of everything, which are all these things, plus our sewer capital projects, which is, which is the sewer engineering box here, and then, we're going to see how we're doing financially. You know, we would hope that we're going to manage the money so well, that the rates can be stabilized. That would be the goal.
The money, the money you're receiving every year right now, you're not doing projects right now, as the money's coming in, you're using that money to do those projects?
Yes.
You are. So you're not putting anything away, as far as to invest, when it comes in like that, you don't put it in some kind of investment while you wait for the project?
No, there is, there is money, so to speak, sitting in the bank, so it is invested until the day, it's sort of like the Propel bond proceeds, it's invested till the day we write the check, to pay the contractor for the work.
And each of the projects are in different phases, so some are in the design phase, some are in construction phase, so we're not using that money all at once.
So, we, but are we putting, do we put any of it away?
There are reserves. If you, all these fee studies, one of the things that they talk about is, you always need to have a couple different types of reserves, one for emergency, one for this. So to answer your question, yes, there are some reserves, so we're not going to spend everything and then have a sewer spill and not be able to pay for it.
So then, some of the money the folks of our community are paying for those fees are being put away, where you are making money on top of that?
And right now, as you probably are aware, nobody's making a whole lot of interest on anything, but any, any interest that we make is in the fund, it's in the sewer fund, and it's their money, and it's being spent on a sewer purpose.
Currently, interest rates are less than a half percent.
Are you finding that you are, your bids, or your construction bids are coming in lower now than they were, let's say, a couple of years ago, when we decided, or three years ago, when things were different? Are they not, not cheaper today than they were three years ago?
I'll let Steve answer that question, because I don't know about costs of sewers.
Yes, we have seen a reduced cost of construction. However, recently, with the oil uncertainties, the materials we use for cured-in-place resin are petroleum-based, and much of the pipe we're putting in is PVC, also petroleum-based. So we are seeing now an increase in pipe materials, but generally speaking, the construction costs have been lower than, say, five years ago, when there was a big construction boom.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Grunkie?
Just a couple of questions about clay piping versus PVC piping. If I, if I saw your map right, most of Buena, or a good portion of Buena had clay piping, and most of Buena probably came in under the Shatter Ridge area and Business Park area, which are really relatively new, speaking, maybe twenty, twenty-five years old. So, are you going to replace some of that with PVC, or is it just a matter of prioritization of what needs to be replaced?
The clay piping is very durable and long-lasting. The problem is that it comes in shorter sections, so there are more joints, and joints are typically an area for failure. It is also brittle, so that if there's some differential settlement in the ground, or another utility is crossing in close proximity, and the utility settles a little bit, the clay will crack and allow water or roofs to infiltrate. So, we don't have any long-term concerns with the clay material itself, but it is conducive to some of these defects, which are generally repaired with lining. So we are not planning on digging up clay and replacing it with PVC, but we are lining clay pipes that have these defects. There are many clay pipes in the system that don't have defects, and they'll remain unchanged and last for a very long time.
How small diameter can you replace through the intrusion or extrusion of this plastic through it?
Four-inch diameter is the smallest diameter, and that's typically a customer lateral, which we are not restoring or replacing. We have city and district mains as small as six-inch. Most of the pipe is eight-inch, so we can line six-inch, we can line eight-inch, and of course, anything larger.
And so, at this point right now, we have videoed our entire series of pipes within the city and within Buena, and are in position of improving as needed.
Yes, the entire collection system for Vista and Buena have been videoed, and each pipe segment has a defect ranking point system per foot. So not only do we know all the conditions, we have an electronic database with the severity of the defects, and we're prioritizing based on those defects.
Now, when it comes to the actual construction, this is done by outsourcing. We don't, we don't employ new employees in order to construct these, these pipes.
Correct.
And because we're a charter city, do we get a cost advantage when it comes to outsourcing?
The city projects can be constructed with non-pervailing wage labor. The district projects must be constructed with prevailing wage labor. The price breaks come in strategic bid packaging, making the projects large enough to attract a high volume of bidders, and then also timing of the releases of the bids.
Okay.
There is one caveat to that, though. Most of our Vista projects are funded by the state revolving fund, so that kicks us into prevailing wage.
Let's talk about that for just a second.
So if I was going to answer his question, I would have said, most of our sewer projects are low-bidder, prevailing wage, typical public works projects.
So, so you're saying that many of these, many of these projects are bundled in such a way to make them rather large, and so you're not paying them in real dollars, in real time, you're paying them with bonding? And you're, and you're using an advantage of a state revolving fund that, what's the difference in the rate? Because obviously, with numbers these large, these rates can make a big difference.
The state revolving fund rate is about two-point-seven-five. The typical bond rate for something like this is at least five. So it's about half.
And we're talking tens of millions of dollars that we're funding?
We're, we're talking, you know, it's always been this number, a hundred million, has always been kicked around. We might be under a hundred million now. We have loans now out to the state for twenty-six million. We're looking strategically at probably another, you know, it, well, a twenty-nine-million-dollar our share of a Carlsbad project for state revolving fund money and beyond. So, basically, all the things we were thinking about for public financing in the past, we're hoping that we can get state revolving fund money, because it's so favorable.
And the state revolving funds are presently available, you know, with this whole state in crisis right now, is it something that we need to be concerned about?
We've talked to our financial advisor, we've heard all sorts of things about it, but we don't have any reason to believe that there's going to be a problem with the state revolving fund loans.
So, so this, this opportunity for reduced interest rates are made available to us in the foreseeable future, then?
It's, it's, it's very attractive, and one of the reasons why we can get good credit with the state, you know, we qualified for twenty-six million dollars in loans, and now we're going to try to increase our credit limit, but one of the things that allows us to increase our credit limit is the fees that we charge, and the fact that we can show that the council was willing to raise the fees to pay the costs of operating the system, it makes you a good credit risk.
And I, I appreciate the fact that you clarified that, when we talk about our sewer system, we're talking about not just geographically in Vista or Buena, it goes often to Carlsbad, it goes into the Encina wastewater operations and so forth, too.
And we didn't even go into all the ocean-side flow agreements and all these things with San Marcos and everyone else. There's, there is a lot to it, and there's a lot of money that exchanges hands in the sewer business.
I, I might just say, too, you know, Mayor Ritter and I sit on Encina, and I had the opportunity, they just had a very large sewage leak over there, and I saw the pipes, and, and you were talking about the steel-reinforced cement pipes, the, the material that goes through the sewage pipes is so toxic that it just ate right through it, and it just crumbled. It was amazing, it was amazing. Last thing I have is just the inconvenience to the residents of Vista. You've talked about, a lot about bringing these, this plastic through, and maybe just excavating at a particular site, but are we going to see streets, street closures and so forth, in order to accomplish some of these goals?
I don't think we're going to see, see street closures. We'll see some traffic control, different places. We will have some projects that aren't CIPP, that are traditional, cut and cover, and they'll, they'll probably involve street lane closures and things like that in the future. But, one of the things the sewer program was committed to is to making sure people are aware of it, and even on the projects that have been done recently, you know, they've done door hangers to tell people what to expect, when the construction work will be undertaken, and all of that, and had really very few complaints.
Good. Well, thank you for your report, and look forward to the new repairs. It's not something, I just need to make the statement, you know, that we as a city body have so many responsibilities, and sewer is one of the major responsibilities, it's something that people take for granted, and it's such a major cost for our city.
True.
Councilmember Coles.
Thank you. A question and then a couple of comments. You mentioned microtunneling as a technology. Can you use that to expand some of the sizing of the sewer lines? Is that something that they do as well? Like to increase the 16-inch to a 24-inch through microtunneling?
I'll let Mr. Jepson talk about that.
Yes, there is a technique known as pipe bursting and pipe reaming, which pulls or pushes a hydraulic ram through an existing pipe to enlarge the diameter. The larger diameter pipe is then pulled through. That is not a preferred construction technique for gravity sewers because in that expanding process, it's difficult to control the grade. And one of the areas where there has been some very good engineering in Vista and Buena is there are very few pump stations, 300, over 300 miles of sewer with only three pump stations. So the grade that we have, these gentle slopes, are the motor that pulls the sewage along. So we have not embraced the pipe bursting and pipe reaming techniques. We don't want to get situations where that gravity slope is disturbed.
Sure, but for small projects, that is a possibility to do a minor repair that way. The other thing, you really brought a new meaning to transparency in government with these sewer cameras. And I really have been impressed here with the sophistication in the whole area of sewer technology. And it's something like Councilman Gronki said, people take for granted, but yet it's probably one of the primary reasons cities were formed, was, you know, how do we get rid of our waste? How do we keep our sanitary conditions healthy for our communities? So this is something that I'm very pleased to hear, how you're on top of it, how you're staying up with the technology of the whole program and the sophistication that's happening around the country as well. So anyway, I want to thank you for the report. I also, I guess I'm really impressed with the fact that we can be as efficient in city government to do these projects at such cost savings. And I mentioned transparency in government in kind of a humorous way, but what we've experienced here this evening is for us to be able to ask questions and find out how the money is being used, how you're being efficient with your costs, and it really is heartening to me to see that we're doing such a good job that way, so thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. Ms. Putnam, do you remember or have any history on when the city was first developed, the commercial, where it went, our sewage went to?
No, I don't. I bet you do, though.
Pardon?
You must.
Now, did it go to Carlsbad like it is today?
Mr. Jepson might know the answer.
How long has it been that's been going to Carlsbad?
I believe the early days of sewage, there was a pump station down near where Costco is now, and we did some treatment of it before it was dumped into the creek at that location.
Where Costco is?
Right.
There was a treatment plant there in Costco, you're absolutely right. And I remember back then that if you look at the hills on both sides where Costco is, it comes right into the Ford dealership. You could stand back up in those hills in there and you could smell it back then, okay? Now, once you put that line through and it went to a treatment plant in Carlsbad, you no longer have that smell in your community because, I mean, it was terrible, especially in the afternoons when the wind started blowing. Now, what happens when we do that is that we no longer have that and our values of our property increase tremendously, I think, by the fact that we did that and decided for that way back then. So I know that we're doing this for five years, the increase, and hopefully that we'll be able to repair the pipes that we have here that were put in years ago, which is smart planning, and I hope it works out. Thank you.
Mr. Jepson might be able to clarify, but I believe in 1963, when the city incorporated, both Vista and Carlsbad formed Encina at that time with federal grants.
Yeah, that's correct.
And Carlsbad had that smell for a long time. I remember driving down the freeway.
That's right. Thank you.
We have covers now. That smell. Okay, we have one speaker, and I just want to say one thing with the CCTV, when they televised those pipes, it saved $30 million by doing that, so that was a huge savings that, you know, so. But we have one speaker, I think, and Chuck Rabel wanted to speak on this, and then we'll, after that, we'll close the public hearing.
Two quick questions, if I might. When the study was done to support the increase in the sewer rates, the assumption was that Encina, operations at Encina was going to grow 10% a year for the next 10 years, that the Vista, Buena districts were going to grow 5% for the next 10 years. Operation cost, the question is, what's been the experience over the last three years?
And if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and answer his question. It hasn't happened at that rate, and that's why we're going to be working on the financial plan, because we're going to input all of what we know now that's different, all of the cost savings we've experienced, the actual operation costs for Encina and Buena and Vista. So we'll be able to know better how we stand in terms of our rates.
I would suggest that you use a different consultant, that's all, because 10% a year over 10 years is just ludicrous.
Part of the problem was that was the consultant didn't really make those numbers up. Those were the numbers he was given by Encina.
Wonderful.
Encina.
Encina. So he, you know, the consultant wasn't trying to question the data. He wasn't telling us, you shouldn't have $147 million in capital projects, you should have 100 million. He was saying, what are you going to do? What's City of Vista, what's your operating budget going to be? Encina, what's your operating budget going to be? How do you anticipate it'll grow? And of course, back in 2007, I don't think we all really knew that people's budgets would start to shrink instead of grow.
And our consultant was relying on Encina's 10-year forecast.
Last question, if I can. Weeks ago, there were young men throughout here, young ladies, asking about a skatepark.
That would be public comments.
They, no, the, what, the question, my question is, if it's not in the capital improvement program, why isn't it? Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, that was not a public hearing. I was, I thought, we talked about it so long, I thought we moved on to public hearings. So it was a discussion item, so.
Mayor Ritter, if I could respond to that. There is a provision for a skatepark in the unfunded portion of the CIP, so it's in there. It's just not got any funding allocated to it at this time.
So with that, then, I would like to hear a motion, you know, adopting the resolutions and approving the CIP program budgets.
I'll make a motion to adopt this.
You know, I'll second.
Are those for all three items? Buena, CDC, and, is that right, for all three? Yes? Have a motion in a second.
Yes, all three.
Okay, then, please vote.
Yes?
Push it again. Okay, motion passes. So now, we'll go to the public hearings. And the first public hearing is the 2010 Regional Transportation Improvement Plan Amendment, the RTIP, which is an annual thing that we do. So I'm going to have a presentation by Mr. Conley.
Thank you, Mayor Ritter and Council. Matt Attaberry, our associate engineer, is the responsible staff member for all the sand ag tracking, so he's going to provide a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. The RTIP is a multi-billion dollar, multi-year program for major highways, arterial, transit, and bikeway projects. The RTIP is composed of federal and state grant funds and Transnet funds. Transnet is the local half-percent transportation sales tax funding program approved by the voters in November 1987. Transnet sales tax revenue is divided equally between highway, public transit, and local street and road projects. Municipalities in San Diego receive Transnet allocations based on a formula that considers population and road miles. Vista has a population of 97,500 people and roughly 175 road miles. Based on those factors, estimated funds available are as follows, so about $9.5 million over five years. Amendments to the RTIP are allowed every quarter after approval from the affected agencies. The purpose of this amendment is to adjust the 2010 RTIP so that it matches the 2011, 2012 CIP budget. The following is a summary of the current projects that are listed in the 2010 RTIP Allocation adjustments to match the approved CIP budget adjustments are as follows. West Vista Way Design, reduction of $36,000. This project received a federal earmark in the amount of $570,000, and at that time, the grant was programmed into the 2010 RTIP. Since then, the city received documentation that only $534,000 would be reimbursed. The decrease of $36,000, or 6.5%, was withheld for administration of the grant by Caltrans. Then we have the Maryland Drive Phase 2 improvements. The CIP budget shows the addition of $150,000 for fiscal year 2011 and 2012. However, $100,000 was already drawn down from the 2008 RTIP, so the new programming of $50,000 with this amendment will make the RTIP and CIP budget match. Then we have the Inland Rail Trail. The 2011, 2012 CIP budget shows the addition of $100,000 to this project. Therefore, with this amendment, we are programming an additional $100,000 into the 2010 RTIP. Next, we have the Street Resurfacing and Maintenance Project, CIP number 8155. We're asking to add $686,000. The 2011, 2012 CIP budget shows the addition of $587,000 to the project. Some of the 2008 RTIP funds programmed for the project expired and were returned to a Vista RTIP carryover account. Therefore, the programming of $686,000 into the 2010 RTIP will be the new budgeted funds and the carryover funds that will be returned to the project. Next, we have the Bobo Link Storm Drain Project. We're asking to add $225,000. The 2011, 2012 CIP budget shows the addition of $225,000 for that project. Therefore, we are programming $225,000 into the 2010 RTIP. It's important to note that each year, the city is audited by the Independent Taxpayer Oversight Committee to make sure we are following the Transnet guidelines. Funding for the following projects have been drawn down from sand ag, so the project no longer needs to be in the 2010 RTIP. And we have the Signal East Vista Way at Oak Drive, Signal North Santa Fe at East Drive, Foothill Overlay and Improvements, Street Rehabilitation and Maintenance, Boys and Girls Club Sidewalks, Longhorn Drive and Promontory Ridgeway Pedestrian Improvements, and the Bobie Air Storm Drain and Street Rehabilitation Project. Therefore, the remaining projects that are, that will count for no change in the 2010 RTIP are the Roadway Rehabilitation Curbs and Gutters Project, the West Vista Way Widening Construction Phase 1, Pavement and Sidewalk Management Systems Project, and the Out and About in Vista Program. And that concludes the presentation, and we are available for any questions you have.
Councilmember Gronki.
Just a couple of questions about the chart you just showed. It showed a storm drain in a transportation improvement program. How did that happen? The Bobo Link.
Bobo Link.
Yes, I believe for that project.
Right at the bottom there.
Yeah, I believe that project was, the storm drain was required as part of the improvements for the street improvements.
So it's adjacent to it or it goes underneath it?
It goes underneath the improvements.
Okay. And where are we at with Inland Rail Trail? I see $100,000 there. I know we've been sitting on that. San Marcos has already done with their improvements.
We've done some conceptual design of the alignment through Vista and the county. We're basically working right now on the design plans that would extend from the end of the trail in San Marcos all the way to the Oceanside City Boundary, and that works underway. We have a committee that's meeting with our engineering staff monthly to work through that design.
Is it sand ag's exclusive funding that's going to cause this to happen, or we need to look for some outside sources?
Sand ag funding is what we're using to fund the current design work that's undergoing. They've also indicated that it's a high priority for them for funding of construction once that work's complete, so it is at the top of their list.
I thought it was kind of a promise of the Sprinter line that there would be an adjacent bike route or walking route.
At this point, we are definitely counting on it as a region to get sand ag funding to help us build that project.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify that the public hearing was open. I don't know if I said it exactly like that, so I wanted to clarify that the public hearing is open. So on the Bobo Link project, can you tell when that will be completed? Will that be completed, or is that, what part of the status is that in? That storm drain project?
Ms. Soja is going to answer that question.
This project is, the design on that project is basically completed. However, we have applied for SRF funding, state revolving funds, the same as sewer, and we have been approved for that, so we are waiting for those agreements to go through. And as soon as we receive that money, we'll be able to build it.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Coles.
Yes, Councilmember Gronki touched on this at the end of his comments, but the Inland Rail Trail will be suitable for bike trails as well?
Yes, it's a paved Class 1 bikeway and trail project.
Okay. And again, where does it hook up from and to?
It is intended to extend all the way from the coast, from 101 to Escondido. The existing portions are built along the Sprinter line through Escondido and San Marcos, and it ends at the San Marcos City Boundary at the county right now. The design work that's undergoing, that we're working on, is from that point to the Oceanside City Boundary, which is right at Melrose next to the Sprinter Station on Oceanside Boulevard.
What is the most optimistic timeline for seeing something like that completed?
My guess is a couple of years down the road is the most optimistic timeline right now.
All right, okay. It's got to get done before I get much older.
So we can't ride a bike or?
Right.
Okay, do we have any other questions? If not, we've entertained someone to close the public hearing and...
Mayor, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and make a motion for staff recommendations on this item.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Motion passes. So I will open the next public hearing, the signed ordinance amendment, and we'll have a report by Mr. Conley.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. John Conley, Community Development Director. This is an item that we've talked about several times before, so here we are again. Just to give you some brief history on the project, the last time we came to council with this was back in February. Before that, in September of last year, we had adopted a revised ordinance, which was a comprehensive review and revision of the signed ordinance based on council direction that we had received before. At that September hearing, we got some direction on some specific changes that were wanted to the ordinance, and so the motion was made to adopt it and bring it back. We came back to the council in November and again in February to talk about those issues and get clarification, and so here we are with the final amendment. It was heard by the Planning Commission last month, and they voted in favor of the staff recommendation of making changes. Just real briefly, the summary of changes are some electronic sign allowances in commercial districts who are recommending the allowance of window signs, electronic window signs, which would allow scrolling messages or computer television monitors in windows with a maximum size of six square feet in commercial zones. Handheld or personally attended signs, this is commonly known as sign spinners, and there's some specific provisions about the size of those signs and the type of allowances that are made for those signs, and that's all included in the revised ordinance. There were two existing marquee signs, the Kenny's Car Clinic and Rainwater, that were recommended for keeping by the council, and so we've made provisions for those to allow to remain in their existing condition, but not allow new marquee signs. There's a provision to split the code where signs on city property would be split from signs on private property. This is a... This is a modification that would create some clarity and ease of use for the staff that's regulating these signs, and it wouldn't make substantive changes to the code and what's in the current code as far as signs on city property. Based on council direction from the budget hearings, we have provisions to allow commercial signs on the city's sports fields and our park facilities. They're allowed based on some formulas that we came up with to provide equitable distribution of the income for those to the different sports leagues. Those would be done by a license agreement, which is included as a draft to the staff report, and the signs are allowed up to thirty-two square feet through the program. And that concludes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
I have one speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker, or do you want to, okay, Cliff Kaiser?
Mayor, council. In the past, I've represented the Vista Chamber of Commerce, and I appreciate the efforts of the staff to come to where we are right now with the sign ordinance. But the comment I have right now is relatively minor, and this is not a chamber issue, but the new addition of the sports park signs, the, that were added in this latest revision, do not have the exhibits A and B in the staff report. And although I did get a copy from the staff for one of those exhibits, the placement of those signs at the various ballparks or sports fields, it's not very clear from those diagrams where those signs can be placed. So I would like to see, or hope to see some kind of clarification of where those signs can be, because at Rancho Buena Vista Ballfields, for example, where my daughter plays, there's temporary fences there for softball season, and other teams use it at other times of the year, and there's no fences there, other than maybe the, the batting cages or things like that. So the diagrams that's included with the administrative policy were not clear as to where those signs go. That's my minor comment.
So it's temporary fences? They aren't there all year? They're just there some?
Not for the girls' softball. You know, when they'd use it in other times of the year for soccer or other things, I'm not sure what they do.
Mr. Conley, could you clarify where the sports field signs? Sure, we, we have a, an attachment to the staff report. It's not going to be approved as part of this ordinance. It's an exhibit to give you an idea of how we're going to deal with the sports field signs. We asked the Parks and Rec staff to go out and show in a graphical form where those signs would be allowed, and that's with the exhibit that Mr. Kaiser's referring to. We could certainly provide some more clarification or put some more work into those exhibits to make sure that they're more clear, but the identification of those locations has been finalized. We just probably need to graphically show it a little better.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Gronky.
Several issues about what you just expressed. About allowances for the marquee signs, does that mean that those signs will stay in place until a new owner purchased that property, and then they'll be required to replace them?
Those signs are allowed to stay in place in perpetuity.
So it doesn't matter if there's a new owner or not?
That's correct.
Or newly c, okay. In the, in the splitting of the code, does that give us some kind of special privileges to the city that the, the free market doesn't have opportunities to?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. So, so can you clarify that a little bit?
There, there are provisions in the signed ordinance that will apply to private property that would not necessarily apply to the city on city property, and the intent of that was to provide some more flexibility in the event that the city wants to pursue signage for community events that wouldn't necessarily apply, you know, like connecting to a building like a normal wall sign would, or ideas to generate revenue. Those are some things that the city's explored in the past. So there is some more flexibility in the city code for signage in commercial zones.
Well, that kind of leads into my next question. You're talking about signage at the, exclusively at the sports park?
Correct.
Is there opportunities for, because right now, this city's hurting financially. Is there, are there opportunities for us to use a similar type of signage ordinances for, say, at the Wave Water Park or at the Moonlight so that we can gain additional revenues?
Yes, those opportunities do exist within the framework of the code that's proposed.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing about sign twirlers, I just want to make sure we're clear on the point that they can wear suits, but can they wear masks? I know there's one guy out there in a mask. I find that rather scary.
We removed the provision that they couldn't wear masks because we were afraid that there would be potential First Amendment violations with that.
So he can wear his mask?
We couldn't prohibit someone from wearing a mask.
Yes, scary.
There's some potential religious implications there, too, so definitely a concern as far as constitutional rights.
Legally, we just should not touch that?
Councilman Gronky, that is correct, yes.
Okay. Personally, I find it offensive. And also on this twirling, twirling signs and so forth, too, there's no illumination, no lighting, you know, this is a basically a two-by-three sign, and it's hand painted or professionally done?
That's correct, and they're only allowed during daylight hours, and no illumination is allowed.
Okay, well, you, I know it's daylight hours, but I'm afraid that somebody's going to, you know, put a flashlight on or something, try to get their additional attention.
Or neon. Neon twirler.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, first, Mr. Piper, did you have something?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to make it clear for the record that there is a changed page on page forty-seven of seventy-six that changes a, an ambiguous reference to a fixed time at night, and this change was made at the request of an issue pointed out by the ACLU.
Which one was that again? Where on forty?
It's a new page forty-seven, and the exhibit B used to be sunrise to sunset. It now is sunrise to nine P.M., and this is to accommodate a concern that we felt was legitimate that was raised by the ACLU yesterday.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. When this came in front of us a while back about the spinners and all that, I, I recall that, that we were going to allow the spinners for a couple of years or something like that because the economy was tough, and, and we would allow that, and then after that, I wasn't sure what we were going to do. I recall voting on that, but I brought that up the other day, and, and I just want to know if, if the council remembers that.
I don't recall that. I know I've dealt with this for, it feels like years at this point, from Planning Commission to City Council. I know at one time, it was off, off completely, but I think that was a recommendation from Planning Commission at one time, and it was City Council that changed it, and I believe it was just a permanent change.
Permanently, okay. Well, I just want to say is that on all, any of these, John, when you put anything out there in front as an ordinance, sign ordinance, it, that's it. You don't change it anymore after that, correct? Or what does it take to change it? Come back in front of the council?
Planning Commission recommendation and council approval.
So it can be done again?
It's at the discretion of the council, and that's generally why this was undertaken in the first place. Was that your direction or prior council's direction?
Thank you.
Councilmember Coles?
Yeah, my memory on that matter was back last fall, and I was just in the audience at that time. There was a big debate, discussion, and examples, and you're right, there was a, the emphasis was the poor economy, we need all the help we can get, and it made it sound like kind of a temporary thing, but there was no action about it being a temporary thing. And then when it came back to us to approve the next step, there really wasn't a lot of discussion about that matter. I, I do like the idea, and you brought up the fact that if in the future, we don't think this is good, a good image for our city, we can in fact initiate a process to, to change that, just like the, I like the, the opportunity that the city has more flexibility in their sign ordinance, because anything the city does is subject to public review. I mean, we have to decide here in front of everybody if we're going to do something, something with signage on city property, whereas a private party, they wouldn't have to get public approval for, for what they do. So I don't, I don't have a problem with having the, the, the different, difference in ordinance for the city from the private enterprises.
Councilmember Gronky.
Yeah, just to go along with that discussion, originally, I was opposed to the sign twirlers, simply because I thought they were a distraction to drivers and, and didn't really give a good impression of our city, but I was convinced by the members of the business community that, you know, that they're something positive for them. I, I would, I would like to see how it works out. Let's just let it see how it works out, and then I'd be inclined to revisit it if we have to, honestly. I want to go back to one point again, and, and that's because of the nature of the changing of the ordinance. We're talking sunrise to sunset initially, and now we're saying to nine P.M., and I want to emphasize this whole thing about illumination and lack thereof on these signs. So how do we enforce this if we find someone violating that?
The difference here that we're speaking of, the handheld signs for commercial purposes are only allowed sunrise to sunset.
Okay.
The change is only applying to non-commercial speech signage that someone would want to do, like, let's say, outside a public meeting, and the ACLU raised an issue, I understand, Mr. Piper can correct me, that they wanted to provide people an opportunity in the evenings, like during rush hour, to be able to have non-commercial signs, free speech type signs at public meetings, and so that's why the extension was proposed till nine P.M., but that doesn't apply to commercial handheld signs.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that.
Yet it also said the display period extended to nine P.M., or if later, thirty minutes after such a meeting is officially adjourned. So it could be a little later, too, so. Okay, so I've entertained a motion to close the public hearing, and what would you like to do?
I'd like to make a motion.
I mean, Mayor Padilla.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and accept the, the ordinance as proposed.
Okay.
A second?
Can I have a motion and a second? Can you close the public hearing, yes? Mr. Lopez?
Yeah.
Push, push again.
That's all right? There. That's what it took?
Yeah, you got it. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next thing we're going to be doing is we have oral communications, and this section provides the public with the opportunity to speak on any item which is not appear on the agenda, but the state law prohibits our council from taking any action on items not listed on the agenda. So in order for us to stay on schedule, each speaker is limited to three minutes, and the green light means proceed, the yellow light means you have thirty seconds left, and the red light means your time is up. So we have one, two, we have three speakers tonight, and so we will start with Susan Sims. It's right there in front, see right on the, right side, little black box in front of you, and look on your, is that your right, on your right?
You'll see it illuminate.
There, yeah.
When it goes off. When you start.
Okay, I'm short. Thanks, Susan.
Okay, my name is Susan Sims, and thank you for having me and allowing me to speak. And I am a retired teacher with Vista Unified, my first year of retirement, and I'm working to see that we get skate park facilities built in Vista to give the kids of Vista, the four thousand or so estimated skaters in this town, a safe place to skate. And just wanted to catch you all up on what I've been doing. Me and my little group went on a little field trip last weekend up to Long Beach, and up in Long Beach, there's an ex-city councilman named Mike Donilon, who has been working on a skate park system up there for the last fifteen years, I'd say, started when he was a councilman. And so far, he's got, he and his group have got five skate parks built and another two that are under construction, and when they get those seven done, they are figuring they are finished, okay? Now, in the process, he has gotten the whole city totally, totally sold. The police department loves it because it's made their job easier. In the, you know, kind of rough neighborhoods where they built the skate park, they had the crime rate go down sixty percent, and graffiti rate went way down, too, okay? So it did solve a lot of their, you know, social problems that they were having. Another thing he told us was that he is going to be starting to do community outreach to, you know, teach other communities how to do this, and I guess we are the very first that he invited up there. You know, we're the first that asked, I suppose, but he gave us a really nice tour, and he's so enthusiastic, and he's willing, as a matter of fact, he's coming down in a couple of days to visit with us, meet with our kids at, at the Decade Skate Shop where we meet every other week with the kids, and, you know, just give him a pep talk and talk about how he involved the kids up in Long Beach with coming up with good designs for skate parks that they would really be enthusiastic about, and he wants to tell us, us and the kids how he did it. Okay, so that was the first thing I wanted to tell you about. Oh, and who went? Not just Mary Jo, my, you know, my friend that's working with me and myself, and Lucy, the, you know, the senior that we've been working with, but also John and Lisa Lessie of the Vista Village Business Association. They went with us, too, to check it out from their standpoint, and they got some good, you know, some good pointers. Is it yellow?
Yeah, I have, okay.
Fifty seconds. Can I, just really quick. We need to meet about the grant. I see all this free money floating off, and it just makes me sick. You know, there's money out there that's not taxpayer money, it's free money. We got the deadline coming up on Prop eighty-four, and I want to see you about it. We got ideas.
Okay, we'll talk.
Red light.
One question.
Yes, Mr. Lopez?
Are you allowed? The crime, they say, went down sixty percent.
In that neighborhood?
That's right. Graffiti went down thirty percent. So it's, what, what, what they're coming up with is that most of the problems, instead of having problems all over your town, what, they come into one area, and there's less problems. Kids play in one area, and so there's less problems in the community, so.
Kids have something, you know, productive to do, and they also feel valued because there's people there caring about them, and they, you know.
Thank you for your effort.
Mm-hmm. And it's not quitting. I'll be here for the duration.
Thanks, Susan. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Renee Glazba.
Thank you, Mayor. City councilmembers, thank you for an audience and staff. You have the page, we're on the same page. Mission Statement of Vista, to serve the citizens of Vista by providing for their health, safety, and welfare, that includes children, they're all citizens, Lord here. AT&amp;T has a first-age survival guide. Poisoning, small children are most often the victims of accidental poisoning. Poisons are all around them. Keep cosmetics, detergents, bleach, clearing, cleaning solutions, glue, lime, paint, turpentine, kerosene, gasoline, and other petroleum products, alcoholic beverages, aspirin, and other medications out of their, their reach. Alcoholic beverages. There's a national study for children. We want to keep your strawberry festival free of alcoholic beverages, please. Serve fresh lemonade or root beer, something not alcoholic, please. The young fellow who ran into Isaak in Oceanside was a Vista High School person, and it's very sad, the alcohol got to his brain. He is bombarded with a lot of alcoholic activities, and he sees it, that it's a fun drink, but we have to show him as a citizens of Vista, the leaders, that it's not a fun drink. Alcohol is dangerous, and if you have less alcohol in your street fairs and festivals, you'll have less injuries and less drunk drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glazba. Our next speaker will be Cliff Kaiser.
I'm actually here on behalf of the Vista Chamber of Commerce. I am co-chair of the board and also chairman of the Vista Strawberry Festival, and I'm very excited to give you an update on the events that are about to happen here this coming weekend. coming weekend. I think many of you know that we've added many different events to this strawberry festival over the last couple of years. This year, we're adding a volleyball tournament on Saturday over at Vista Magnet Middle School. We hope to have up to 70 teams playing volleyball Vista High School, some experts as well. We'll also have a platinum record winner, Gary Puckett concert over at the Moonlight Amphitheater on Saturday evening. Those two events will kick off the strawberry festival for the big events that are happening on Sunday. Sunday, of course, is the big street fair, carnival rides, street vendors. This year, we have over 190 vendors in our street fair, the highest number of vendors we've ever had in that street fair. We will also have a bike tour and a continuation of the 5K run and walk that we had last year, and I'm hoping that you'll all join in on that, one of those two events, as well as the addition of the car show right here in the Civic Center parking lot. We'll have over 60 cars and 20 vendors over there. So, what we are doing here for the city of Vista and for our community is bringing thousands of people into the community, and there's been a lot of effort by many people to spruce up different areas, portions of that community as we get lots of people in here. Last year, we estimated 30,000 people. This year, we're hoping to have upwards of 50,000 people between those two days come into the city of Vista. There's still a little work to be done, there's still a couple of days left, and I would encourage all of you to walk in the downtown areas where most of this is going to be happening and see if we can do the last-minute spruce up to make sure that the people coming to the community get a good favorable impression. A lot of people came together to make this happen, and we designed it this way, to be a community event. Of course, the chamber was involved in, in working with the city in a lot of areas, but the Vista Village Business Association, the Vista Unified School District, and many nonprofits, including Angels Depot, Solutions for Change, North County Health Surfaces, Girls on the Run, and many, many more. And we've invited, and we will continue to invite, all the community and nonprofits and other organizations here in Vista to join in this event to have a truly outstanding community Vista Strawberry Festival.
Cliff, that class reunion, I think it's from the year 1960, 1970, what, is that on Sunday?
The class reunion is on Sunday, yes.
On Sunday.
It is. For anybody graduated from Vista High School between 60 and 70, I think they've got 400 people planning on coming in already, and that's going to be over at the Wildwood Park.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. Looking forward to this weekend, it should be a fun weekend. Oh, we have people to talk. Councilmember Lopez.
Well, I for one will be out there doing something out there with, with the chamber and the VDBA. A question, though, for you is that you mentioned that you'd have 30,000 people, you had last year, this year maybe 50,000 people. Has there ever been any kind of study on how much, how much a person spends in a community when you have an event like that?
We, as a chamber, have not engaged in any kind of study like that. We have queried the businesses that are in the areas where the street fair goes on, as well as those vendors, to get an idea of how much money is they're generating or they're going. Starbucks, for example, right there in the village, said that they were overloaded and had to send people off to the other Starbucks because they were so busy. Some of the vendors, the nonprofit vendors, they were sold out of strawberry shortcakes or things like that. But no, we have not had anything that measured exactly, or even tried to come close to what revenues were really generated.
When I had the restaurant, and we had a rod run down there, when you have events like that, especially if the event is right in, in the vicinity, you can plan on, on those businesses really doing very well because it just quadruples their businesses, and so, I thank you for working hard to support those businesses, especially the downtown business with the times the way they are now. Thank you for your hard work.
Councilmember Gronky.
Mr. Kaiser. Don't sit down.
Don't sit.
Just so you know, I did contact the people over in Oxnard, and in fact, this is the weekend I was up there, and their festival's going on this weekend, so I happened to take the time to go through there. Took some pictures for you, got, picked up some brochures, so, next time, we can utilize some of their ideas, and I'd be glad to share those with you. You'll be happy to know that Ms. Canane had already been in contact with them, so she probably picked their brain a little bit and brought some of those ideas back. So, I, they talked that they had maybe 60,000 people, and if you're talking 50,000, we're going to do better than them next year.
That's right. We certainly hope to. And yes, we have done a lot of intelligent gatherings, gathering, there are strawberry festivals throughout the, the United States. Oxnard is one of the bigger ones, and there's another one up in, in LA area also. So, yes, we're watching what they do, and we certainly would entertain any kind of ideas. And trying to get the other community organize events involved, too. I've talked with the Little League, I've talked with the girls softball, any kind of organization that can bring people together that weekend is going to make it better for them all.
What I, what I found, the way they organized their, their fair was to utilize a lot of the nonprofits, such as the Little Leagues and so forth, and give them a piece of, of the action through, through the vendors that they had. You know, it really worked out very well. Of course, they've been in place for a long, long time, but I think we could move in that direction, and it would be advantageous to the nonprofits to get involved in it.
Mayor Procham Aguilera.
Yeah, I have a question, I guess, kind of rolls right into Mr. Gronky's statement. You and I had spoke about, you know, potentially bringing the nonprofits into this and then extending Strawberry Festival into a week-long. I mean, do you think by next year, we could maybe do that? Is that a possibility?
We have to tread lightly there. There's a lot of consideration that goes on. This year, we've extended it to Saturday, and we've added two rather significant events, and they're, both of those events are hosted by other people, nonprofits or other organizations to make those happen. Yes, I would actually like to see it go through two weekends. Not exactly clear how that might all manifest itself, but it would help certainly some of the softball and baseball leagues to coordinate their tournaments, give them a little flexibility, and also bring people down to Vista for, for two weeks. And maybe some minor events throughout the week, you know, the restaurants and other stores, having some kind of strawberry festival promotion throughout the week, Restaurant Week or something like that.
Okay, that'd be great. I mean, this is certainly a positive for Vista, and I appreciate what the chamber and VDBA have done for the city of Vista. This is, this is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coles.
I do have one more thing.
Where?
Myself, I know, and Steve Gronky are going to be at the city of Vista.
I will, too.
You will, too? Okay, so, people come down and say hello and ask us questions, we'll be at the city of Vista tent, I guess, or booth.
After the 5K, right?
After the 5K, yes.
I'm not going to be in the 5K this year, I'm way out of shape. But last year, I got the medal for first place in my age group. And I'll tell you my age.
Is it 15 and under?
But I'll be working at the booth this year instead of being in the 5K. So, first I have Councilmember Coles, and then Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. I, I did the 5K last year pushing my grandson.
Good for you.
And we didn't break any records, but we completed it, had a great time. And I was looking at the, the weather forecast, 70 degrees, should be sunny, should be nice, should be moderate weather, no hurricanes forecast, that's always the good news for, for our part of the world. The, the weather also, speaking of my grandson, he's participating in the wave swimming lessons, and whoever needs to be thanked for the way that's going, I want to give them all of my support because the program there is, of all the ones he's been, and this is the best. And so, I wish you luck this, this weekend with the festival. I know it's going to be bigger and better than last year, so, thank you for all you've done.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Being in the restaurant business, it just dawned on me that, what you said, you know, that, you know, if, maybe next year, you could really look at that and do a promotional thing with restaurants where they give a discount for that week or that weekend. Do you have that now, or no?
No, we don't, we do not have any formal program for discounts.
But that's just an idea that just popped up, and, you know, and this is how you, you know, you, you get out in your community and work together in your community, and these ideas come up, and you make a strong community and, and give people a reason to come to your town. So, good job again.
Thanks. One other thing, the, the concert on Saturday night, ticket sales are going kind of slow. We expect a bump here in the last couple of days, but tell your friends, tell your family about the, the concert.
Gary Puckett, Union Gap. This will be a good weekend, congratulations to you guys, this is going to be very fun. So, everybody come out and, and do, do something. If you don't run, you can walk, walk or ride your bike, or just come on down. So, I guess with that, next are, let's see, reports from the city council and the city manager and the city attorney. So, I will start with, so, I'll start down here. Maybe I'll start with our attorney, Darryl Piper.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish everyone a good Memorial Day holiday and remembrance of all of those individuals past and present in service to our country.
Thank you. Our assistant city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two updates. The first one deals with the state and the status of redevelopment. Last week, the governor released his 2012 budget revision, which maintains his original proposal to eliminate redevelopment agencies and divert the assumed $1.7 billion of tax increment money. This is the same redevelopment elimination proposal that has been declared illegal by the Legislative Council and by numerous redevelopment legal experts. And although voters passed Proposition 22 to end the raid of local government funds, the governor continues to push the elimination. So, we will continue to keep you updated as things materialize, or in the state's case, I guess, don't materialize. The second issue is an update on the city's streetlights. After mailing out the return postcard flyers to all the property owners in Vista, the city did not receive the required 2,500 return postcards supporting a fee increase. And so, as a result of that, staff is not recommending a mail ballot election at this time. The total number of replies received was 3,842. Of those, 47 percent supported a fee increase, which amounted to 1,825 yes replies, and 53 percent opposed a fee increase, which amounted to 2,017 no replies. So, we really want to thank all the property owners who took the time to provide the city their opinion. In February, the city council discussed turning out two-thirds of the residential streetlights beginning June 1st if there was not support for an increase. And at this time, staff is not recommending turning out the lights due to several issues that still need to be resolved. The main issue is that we've been working with SDG&E for over four months now, and we still need more time to continue discussions with them to obtain their answers and potential costs of turning off both city streetlights and SDG&E-owned lights. So, we're going to need several more months to deal with SDG&E on this issue. The other side of that is, the city's been relying on case studies in other parts of California as a rationale for reducing costs. And at this time, it does not appear that SDG&E operates in a similar fashion to their utility counterparts throughout California. As a result, staff is not recommending turning off the streetlights if it would mean that the cost to turn off the lights would be more than the cost savings from using less electricity. So, for now, staff will concentrate on further discussions with SDG&E, which will take several more months, and at that time, we'll bring forth a recommendation to the city council once we have a better game plan.
Thank you. I guess we'll go to Councilmember Lopez. Any reports on anything, any meetings you've gone to, or anything you want to?
Yes. I'm looking for support of an idea that I have for our community. And it is to, to make the effort to see if we can work and get, I'm not sure how much money, it could be $4,000, $5,000. We, our, our community, our city here, has an employee that specializes in well water, on how to get well water, how, how it works. He worked at San Marcos and was very successful in San Marcos with the ideas and what he's done here, there in San Marcos. So, I'm asking for support of this council to see if we can at least begin some type of process, even if we hire a company, or maybe you don't have to spend money, so that we can drill for water, or come up with the idea of drilling for water at the, at Bringle terrace Park. Also, the, the garden club is looking for, I believe they were talking about drilling, putting a big pond up there, is that correct, John? Maybe that they could work, where they could work with us and fill that pond for what the water they need, and be, that be as a reservoir, so that we can water our fields the way we really need to do. And the savings is tremendous in that. So, I would appreciate if this council would talk to our city manager, and hopefully, we could go forward with this.
He's our employee, is one of our employees?
We have an employee that's very knowledgeable in this, and, and that's, that's half the battle right there, knowing what, what to do and how to do it, and knowing that he knows cost. And I just think that, that, that we could, there's plenty of water there, I feel, and I think that you don't have to spend the money that I think that, I heard, the numbers that I heard, but at least find out exactly what it would really cost, and if, if it's costing us $100,000 a year, and it costs us $20,000 for electric, or $30,000, it's a lot, it doesn't take that long to pay for the, to put in the, the project. So, I'm asking this council to please talk to the, to the city manager about it. Thank you.
And just so the council's aware, in February, at the budget workshop, the idea of using wells or installing wells was discussed, and we presented the budget for those wells. Staff is fully in favor of wells. It's great, it saves water, it allows us to use the natural resources to water. We do have an employee that has experience with wells. However, it's just the capital cost, upfront cost, to be able to construct those wells is, is where we find difficulty right now.
Councilmember Coles.
Yes, thank you. It's always nice to talk about water. I had my own well when I lived in the Central Valley, and it, we always had to go, you know, 20 feet deeper every five years to, to keep water moving. The other thing about wells is that the quality of water sometimes can actually harm the vegetation if it's not the right, the right quality or the salt solutions in the water, especially around here. I think some of us had a visit from Robert Rivas, who represents in Quintros, which was a program formed, I was a part of the original leadership of that program, to try to enhance the quality of education and aspirations of young Latino male students. And he came to several of us last week, two, or two weeks ago, to discuss using Vista as a model city. The project works through San Marcos, Oceanside, and Vista, to use our city government as a representative of how these young people could see how government works. And I think he's putting together a plan sometime in June. They'll have a one-week training over at Cal State San Marcos, and one of the mornings, I think he wants to come here to City Hall and meet with some of us and some staff to help encourage and show these young people how, how government works, how public officials work, and some of the things that we do. So, I encourage this, the council and staff to, to support this, this effort and lend whatever help you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Procham Aguilera.
I have nothing to report. I would definitely support Mr. Coles in that area. As far as the well water, I think I, Mr. Johnson actually covered what I wanted to say. I know that there was already a study done, and it was very expensive, but if we can find a more inexpensive way to do it, I know the Gardens is definitely interested in well water. Any kind of conservation is important to the, the Gardens, and I think the city of Vista as a whole should make that a priority. But we should conserve, or spend money to conserve when it's going to cost the city more than what it actually saves. So, I can only support something that's going to save the city money long-term. something that's going to save the city money long term. And sometimes when you capitalize those costs, it's not a long-term saving. So that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Gronky.
Just a couple of things. Mr. Kaiser mentioned something about making sure the downtown is nice and cleaned up and ready to go. Are we going to be prepared for that, Mr. Johnson? Have you been to do some special cleanup for that downtown event?
I think Public Works has gone around the primary area of the strawberry festival, Main Street, Vista Village, and done some improvement. I know code enforcement's going out on Friday and Saturday morning to take care of signs that typically get placed up over the weekend, so it doesn't have that blighted look.
Thank you. Thank you. And the last thing I have deals with the Memorial Day. It used to be in Vista, we would have our own event. A woman by the name of Lydia Busto, exceptionally fine person that worked very hard for our community, has passed on and that event is not going to occur. So I encourage all of you to go to the city of Oceanside, which will have a couple of events. I think one in the morning at their vet center, and then one in the evening at seven PM at Eternal Hills, both there to pay honor to those that have lost their lives and protecting our freedoms. So I encourage you to do that.
The only thing I have, a couple of things. This weekend, also, they're going to have new kites in downtown Vista. The art commission is, they're having, all their new kites are going to be put up. I know they've taken a couple of them down already, the old ones. So that, and then I also know they're having, I think, a document shredding at Bringleteris this weekend, in case you have, it's Saturday. What is it? Saturday. Do you know the time?
I think it's nine to noon.
Nine to noon?
Bringleteris Park.
Yeah. So that's, it's free, free document shredding. You can take anything down that you want to get shredded. So that's another interesting.
You can take two boxes.
Only two boxes?
Yes. Each resident can take two boxes.
Okay, not a big thing. Okay. So two boxes. Each resident can take two boxes. I got that straight. Okay. So that, and then with that, I don't have anything else. If any, for the good of the order, we will just be adjourned until the next time.